Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome. I love to see that squirrel happen because it really gives us an idea of how diverse Clackamas County is. And actually, I found out that our public and government relations folks modeled it after the opening of Parks and Recreation. So if you get a chance, watch Parks and Rec and you will see the similarity, not only in the beginning of the show, but in how we operate state government here, or actually local government in Clackamas County. And I mean that in a good way. Good morning. Mr. Schmidt, could you do roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioners, first, our staff support today. County Council, Stephen Madcor. Clerk to the Board, Mary Rathke. Chair Bernard and Commissioner Fisher are out of the office today. So Commissioner Schrader, you are serving as acting chair of the meeting. With that, the roll call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Schrader.
Here. Let's rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So today, I see a lot of young folk in the audience. Welcome, because today is National Bring Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. And we, I believe, are going to have a presentation to that effect? No, we're not. Oh, presentation's next. So we're going to call all of you up for a photo here momentarily, but welcome. I hope you have a really good time with your moms and dads to see what they do for work. I have, my kids actually have done some work, I like to think, because I influence them. I have a daughter who does security work for Lloyd's Bank in England. I have another daughter that's a daughter. And I have three sons, one son who's in the trades, and two other sons that are farmers. So, and they're all grown up now, but it's really nice to have you folks here, you kids here, to really see what the important work that your parents do for this county, because they're the ones that run the county. They're the leaders that makes things happen. And we really honor what they do. And we honor you, too. So we get a photo now?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Come up behind you guys.
Okay, guys, we're going to get you up behind us. All right.
Do you want to give up your chair?
Absolutely. We need somebody to be chair.
Go up that way and go all the way to the end.
All right. Hello, hi, little guys. We should have, we should have these guys seeing.
Want to sit in the chair?
Yeah. Would you like to sit in the chair? Okay, there you go.
Keep walking, you guys.
Okay, guys, come on down this way. Come on. We got the taller kids in the back.
And you guys can scoot in and between chairs.
Scoot in and between chairs.
Someone can stand right over here.
We've got room over here.
Okay, we got room down this way, guys. Move down this way a little bit.
Keep walking.
I know that you can see me.
Somebody get right here. This is a good spot, right next to her. Stand right here, good. Can you guys move down more?
Couple more.
You guys keep moving.
There we go, I'll move down.
There she is. Oh. This one, he's pretty friendly. Some of it up here a little bit more.
Don't worry, they'll see you.
There you go. You come up right behind him there.
The young men there in the back, can you just come forward a little bit?
Oh, yeah, can you come up further over here?
All right.
Come up a little bit closer. You can touch the table. You guys can touch the table.
There you go.
You can even talk into the mic.
Do you want to touch the table?
Is that good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. One, two, three, smile.
Eyes open, everyone.
Record number of cameras out there.
All right. Everybody say Clackamas County.
Clackamas County.
Thank you, guys, for coming up. Who wants to take that gavel and come that gavel? There we go.
Bring it back to order.
Go ahead, bring it back to order. Tap, tap. All right, everybody, you can all.
And you guys?
Holly?
And we want to invite you all back at 1:30 if you're still here, back in this room. Back in this room at 1:30.
All right. All right, let's put some folks, before you go down, you can tap the gavel. Let's go for it. Go ahead if you want to. Oh, that's a good one. Okay. Who else, who else wants a turn? Do you want to do the gavel, honey? Or do you want to be sitting in the chair? All right, there we go.
We have a question.
Gets everybody's attention.
That's exactly, all right. Yay, woo, good job, buddy.
Give it three, give it three.
Twenty years in jail.
Yay, all right.
You're welcome to stay or?
You're welcome to stay, if you'd like to, okay?
And be bored to tears.
What?
And be bored to tears.
No, this is going to be a resolution. All right, well, it appears as if we have a lot of young folks who will be chairs of Clackamas County one day. We are looking for candidates in the far future, so moms and dads, remind them that one of these days, we hope one of your kids has this gavel up here to do good government in Clackamas County. All right, so we are going to have a presentation right now, and it is with Health, Housing and Human Services. And Mr. Schmidt, can you take us away with that?
Yes. Commissioners, this is a presentation, a resolution promoting investments in young children and families for early childhood education. We have Annette Decker from Children, Family and Community Connections and Health, Housing and Human Services to present.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Commissioner and, excuse me, Madam Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Annette Decker, and I'm the Early Learning Hub Systems Coordinator with the Early Learning Hub of Clackamas County here in the Division of Children, Family and Community Connections within Health, Housing and Human Services. I'm filling in today for our Division Director, Rod Cook, who is at a conference out of town. I'm proud to present this resolution on behalf of the Early Learning Hub and many of our community partners who are here in the room today. And I think it was an appropriate day to do it on Bring Your Child to Work Day, as everyone here, and obviously, all the children here, have had loving and supportive parents and healthy child development experiences that got them to this point today. So this resolution demonstrates the county's commitment to leadership, to strengthening services, programs, policies and systems vital to the success of infants and toddlers. I also wanted to share just a little bit of background information about brain science and the importance of development within the first three years of life. What we know is that the brain is developing faster from age birth to three than any other during that time period. And that's building the foundation for later learning, health and development. Counties play a pivotal role in the development of their youngest residents, working in coordination with community partners to deliver equitable, comprehensive and complex programming that together are critical to the success of young children, families and communities. Madam Chairperson, would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, I would, please.
Resolution to promote investments in young children and families from prenatal to three. Whereas counties routinely provide an array of programs and services to an estimated 16 million children ages birth to three in the United States, and in 2017, about 29% of counties had more than a quarter of all children living in poverty. And whereas the most rapid period of brain development occurs within the first three years of life, with the brain developing faster from birth to age three than at any later period in life, building the foundation for all future learning, development, behavior and health. And when toddlers receive what their growing brains need, they become healthy children who are confident, empathetic and ready for school and life. And programs and policies that support healthy development from birth to age three result in better social, economic and health outcomes, and build a more productive workforce that strengthens our economy now and in the future. And whereas parents are a child's most important caregiver and play the lead role in their child's healthy development, at the same time, communities and governments can effectively provide families with an array of comprehensive support for an especially critical time. And whereas programs and policies should start early to ensure healthy beginnings at birth, support families with infants and toddlers, and make high-quality childcare and learning environments more accessible and affordable to all. And whereas high-quality childcare is often unavailable or unaffordable for parents who need it, and many families are not connected to networks or early childhood supports that can offer guidance and confidence to navigate the earliest months and years of their children's lives. And whereas Clackamas County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare and safety of residents in cost-effective ways, especially for the approximately 13,000 children under the age of three in our area. And whereas research shows that when we invest in the first three years of a child's life, the returns for the community are the highest, and we can reduce the need for more expensive interventions later. And whereas research also shows that high-quality early childhood development programs can deliver an annual return of up to 13% per child on upfront costs through better health outcomes in education, health, employment and social behavior in the decades to follow. And economists attribute local economic growth and prosperity to high-quality early care and education programs. And whereas Clackamas County, along with the rest of our state, is experiencing a true crisis in infant and toddler care, our community lacks a supply of quality, affordable childcare options for our youngest children. The price of infant, toddler, childcare in Clackamas County and around the state is often 1.5 times higher than that of tuition at Oregon's public universities, and families bear the burden of the cost. The Early Learning Hub of Clackamas County is working with partners across sectors, including health, education and social services, to ensure that all children and families are supported and have the resources they need to be successful in school and life. The Early Learning Hub of Clackamas County, in collaboration with partners, focuses on assuring that children are ready for kindergarten, families are safe, stable and attached, and we work towards an aligned, coordinated and family-centered early learning system. And whereas the National Association of Counties and other national organizations join the National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers, a project of the Pritzker Children's Initiative, in a groundbreaking partnership to work with communities and states across the country to focus on early childhood development for young children from birth to three. And now, therefore, let it reresult that the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners do hereby sign on to the call of action to prioritize and invest in prenatal-to-three efforts that promote a healthy start at birth, support families with infants and toddlers and high-quality care and learning environments, and utilize the resources available through NACO and the National Center for Infants and Toddlers, to be a champion for change by prioritizing and investing in high-quality infant, toddler programs and supports so that children and families and communities can thrive. Designate the Clackamas County Early Learning Hub with authority to coordinate and maximize county services to optimize child and family outcomes and leverage additional resources. Support the Early Learning Hub to convene and draw on a diverse team of leaders, decision-makers and community stakeholders committed to early childhood investments. Support the Early Learning Hub to take an inventory of local programs and services for children and families. Support the Early Learning Hub to create a plan with measurable outcomes to implement, shift and enhance evidence-based approaches that promote a comprehensive and equitable continuum of care that begins from birth and spans through adulthood, with specific recommendations for children under three and their families. Support the Early Learning Hub to leverage local, state and federal investments and explore innovative funding strategies and revenue streams to support early childhood programming. And support the Early Learning Hub to promote prenatal-to-three policies, best practices and cross-coordination to improve child and family outcomes, as well as service delivery and efficacy in government through streamlined processes.
Well, thank you for that. That was, that was, that is quite the resolution, I have to say.
It is.
And colleagues, do you have, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Just, just one, on your whereas', or, excuse me, not whereas', but your now, therefore, is on support the Early Learning Hub. Primarily, where does that funding come from? Is that through the legislature, through grants?
Yes, the funding through the Early Learning Hub comes through the Early Learning Division out of the Department of Education through the state.
Okay. And we feel that's in threat of being reduced, or do we think that's adequately funded?
It is definitely not adequately funded. It, you know, with any particular program that is funded out of the state legislature, there is always a chance that our funds could be cut or reduced. There is a lot of momentum right now around early childhood, so we do have the possibility that we would be, have increased funding in the future, but those are all related to tax revenues, so it's, you know, you never quite know. But right now, we have a little bit, we think we have some stable funding, but we'd never know exactly how that's going to go in the legislature.
Right. Well, I would just ask my colleagues and suggest that we're be approving this resolution here momentarily, and in order to advocate, or what we can do to actually help by, therefore, supporting that, whether it's a legislator or a legislator, he or she, how we can, how we make sure that the fund is at least secure.
For sure.
Actually, the, the school teacher in me noticed in the very first line of the whereas', you missed the word "of."
Of, I know.
Provide an array of, there's no of.
I know, there's a few typos in here.
It's okay. Couldn't resist.
Well, we are going to fix the typos.
I added a few words that were missing. Hope that's okay.
Okay.
So, Ms. Chair, Madam Chair, I move we approve the resolution promoting investments in young children and families for early childhood education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, but guys, since I have the gavel, I'm going to make just a couple of comments, if that's okay with my board, okay? Because it's National Daughter and Sons to Work Day, I think it's really appropriate we have this resolution today, because it really is important. The theme is workforce development for all. And basically, one of the reasons kids are brought here today is because we want to inspire them to have personal, you know, careers and see what their parents do, but they can only do that if they have the start in life that they need. As I said, early brain research shows that kids that get what they need will prosper later in life. And so, so I want to thank everybody for being here today, and the kids that are here today, because it's obvious to me, you've got a great start. When you were little guys, infants and toddlers, and now you're going to do great things later in life. And this particular resolution came to my attention from the National Associations of Counties, and because we are passing it today, I think we're going to pass it, I think it's going to be a unanimous vote. Basically, we are now in alignment with the National Association and the work that the Pitzer Foundation is doing at the national level. So I can bring this with my colleagues to the National Association. We can add our name, Clackamas County, to the list of counties across the nation that support early childhood development and long-term workforce development for our young people. And thank you for filling in today, I really appreciate it. So now, I guess I can just call the question, right? Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, we're done. Thank you for that. Okay. So, Mary, we are now, yay, okay. So, got to find my script here. Oh, Citizen Communication. And we just have one, and it's Mr. Les Poole. Is he here? Yes, he is.
Can you do this today?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. And Chair Schrader.
Only, only for the day. It's kind of like the kids at work day, it's just a day deal for me.
We know that you're plenty busy, and you don't want the chair's job that bad, do you?
No, I don't.
No, keep doing what you're doing with the Association of Oregon Counties, and let somebody else be the chair.
Thank you.
Amen. A couple of quick items today. I'll be done in less than three minutes. That's a promise. One is, I've, I've asked for comments from the Commissioners in the past, and for support for evening meetings. It's a pretty simple question, and I'd love to hear sometime today or next week whether or not each of you supports and would endorse having one evening meeting a month, or whether you don't think it's worth the investment. It's a pretty simple question, and I think it should be answered. The other issue is, of course, transportation. And that's a big one. There's a lot of concern about how the carbon reduction committee bill, HB 2020, is going to turn out, but it looks like a big gas tax increase, in essence. We can call it what it is, but if the cost of gas goes up, the public's going to say, how come my gas is so expensive? Prices are going up right now. We've had a 10-cent gas tax for maintenance from ODOT in HB 2017 that is bringing in money that was desperately needed, and that's the only gas tax I think I've ever supported. So I'm not here to say that everything the government's doing, I'm opposed to, but I'm very, very concerned about what's happening to our fuel costs. And intertwined with that is, is, of course, an upcoming bond from Metro to fund about a billion dollars for Southwest Light Rail and a number of other projects. So we in the county face, now to bring it to Clackamas County, we face a problem, and that is, it's a great place to move and live, and that's why we're here. People are moving here. We're trying to invite businesses here. And regardless of anything that Trimest does, or anything that, that planners do, we need to focus on expanding the road system. I'm very pleased that the Sunrise Corridor is getting the focus it is, and that's just got to happen. And I would request that, that at some point in the near future, we have a forum on Damascus and the transportation issues, and basically, the east, east of 205, we've got, I mean, there's transportation issues everywhere. We understand that the freeway is its own animal, but what we do east of 205 in the growth area is critical. So I'm deeply concerned about how that's playing out. Happy Valley is growing, regardless of whether or not Damascus is incorporated. The growth issues are there, and as I've said before, we've still got a couple of old wagon roads, which is what Sunnyside Road and Foster Road were, that dead-end into Highway 212, right in the heart of Damascus. So I know the planners, I know the, the Commission is very well aware of the situation, and I would request that we have some type of a forum in the future. And I must apologize, because that took me three minutes and 15 seconds. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. We certainly appreciate it. And as far as night meetings, I've always thought they were a good idea. I think the question is, do we want to do them once a month or every quarter? And I guess that's a discussion we'll have with the Commission in the future. Yes?
Right now, you Commissioners, you've agreed to have a night, an evening business meeting on the fifth Thursday of the month, when there are five Thursdays in the month. So May 30th would be the next evening business meeting.
Okay, thank you, because we do want to, we do want to have opportunities for people to come, you know, that are working during the day and have an evening meeting, so we are attempting to accommodate those requests. Colleagues, any other comments?
I think I've been pretty clear. I've been supportive, and was very supportive, and we had it once a month on a regular basis. And whether, whether that is the second, or third, or fourth Thursday, I'm good with either. But I've always been supportive, you've heard me say that, so.
Okay.
Maybe Commissioner Humberston would like, might like to comment.
At this point, I like what we decided to do, which was go quarterly evening meetings and see how they work. And we've only had one so far, so I would like to at least finish this year, see how the attendance is, make sure that it makes, see if it makes a difference, and if it does, then I'm definitely open to, to changing it. But we sort of agreed that we would give it this, this quarterly approach on, on a fifth Thursday. I'd like to see how that finishes out first.
Not, both, both requests are reasonable. I think we just have to, I think we just have to see. I've been, I've been in a partnership to both. And thank you, Les, for opening that can of worms, we appreciate that.
It's not, you know, I'm not, I guess I'd say I'm not invested heavily either way. I, I want to know that it, that really, that the public actually really will attend, because we do a lot of other activities in the evening on behalf of the county that take up a lot of our time, including on Thursday nights. And so if we see the attendance, then I'm all for it. But if we don't see the attendance, then, then I don't see the point, so.
So I'm not going to belabor this, but I will make one comment. I remember when I was on the Citizens for Community Involvement years ago, prior to being a Commissioner, and that meeting was always an evening Thursday meeting, and I was always asked by another group, well, how come I never showed up to their meetings? And I said, well, because. So I think that Ken's point is well-taken, is that a lot of times, we're trying to juggle not only night meetings, but other, a lot of evening meetings that we have to do, and that's the dilemma that we face. So it's not really a yea or nay that we don't want to do it, it's a discussion of frequency, which I think is a valid discussion to have. I think, I think that's a good thing to do. And also, I think that, you know, what, how do we balance, how do we balance what we do as Commissioners? And, okay, Commissioner Savis, one more comment, and we'll move on, guys.
I just want to just say, I, I think there's a, you know, something we got to consider, and that is consistency.
Yeah.
And I just, from my experiences in prior roles in elected bodies since the year 2001, there were, there have been meetings which were scheduled at 5 o'clock, which was not a good time, because people are still getting, coming home. And we experimented with different times, but, you know, when you get a consistent, reliable time that makes it available, so that any one of us can tell our constituents, come and speak to us, you know, at 10 o'clock on Thursday morning, and you often hear, well, I work. I say, well, every week, if we had the ability to say that every third Thursday, or fourth Thursday, we are, we have a night meeting, that's great. If we tell them it's every fifth Thursday of the month, you know, minus exceptions of holidays, which would apply either way, but it just makes it harder to, to, for people to do it on a regular basis, because maybe their issue and opportunity will not be on a fifth Thursday of a month, which is rare. And by the time that fifth Thursday rolls around, their issue is, is passed, and it's too late for a lot of them. So I believe in consistency and convenience.
Well, it's certainly something we definitely will grapple with as a board, so thank both of you for your comments, and let's move on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for Hillside Manor Emergency Assistance. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One, the City of Lake Oswego and Toowallatin Valley Fire and Rescue District for Advanced Life Support Emergency Medical System. Approval of Amendment Number 17 to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority, for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Gladstone School District for the Food Pantry Program. Approval of a purchase and sell agreement for the purchase of property in Sandy, Oregon. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a board order related to the previously approved vacation of McNary Road. Under Finance, a resolution approving the submission of the Assessor's CAFSA Grant Application for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Approval of a contract with Tap Annie Inc. for the Utilidor Piping and Conduit Extension Project. Under the Development Agency, approval of easements to Water Environment Services for pipeline and access purposes adjacent to the Carley Creek Water Quality Facility and release of existing easements affecting the same. A delegation of authority to execute a property line adjustment deed with Water Environment Services to adjust approximately 0.33 acres of land on property located on Capes Road west of Southeast 120th Avenue. Under Water Environment Services, approval of an easement to Water Environment Services for pipeline and access purposes adjacent to the Carley Creek Water Quality Facility and release of existing easements affecting the same. Delegation of authority to execute a property line adjustment deed with the Development Agency to adjust approximately 0.33 acres of land on property located on Capes Road west of Southeast 120th Avenue. And approval- An approval of a professional services contract between Water Environment Services and OTAC for the Water Environment Services and Happy Valley Storm System Master Plan. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Does any commissioner wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, so, can we have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved, so we have a consent agenda. So, now we move on to Mr. Schmidt and the county administrator update.
Yes, commissioners, I have some amazing, great news to share with you today, as I always try to do on my updates with you. First, I'd like to invite Greg Williams, Deputy Director of Business and Community Services, to come sit at this table while I say amazing things about him. So, Greg, as you know, is our Deputy Director of Business and Community Services here at Clackamas County. He was awarded the Oregon Library Association's Pearl Award. As manager of the Library Information Network of Clackamas County from 2014 to 2018, Greg was instrumental in building trust and supporting collaboration among all the public libraries in Clackamas County. He was the driving force behind the implementation of the Radio Frequency Identification Technology Automated Materials, which, as you know, as you visit a library, you can now check out a book by just having it scanned, and it makes transfer of books between libraries so much simpler. And Greg was the leading force behind making that happen here in Clackamas County. The award, the Pearl Award, is presented actually to an outstanding library, librarian within the Clack, the state of Oregon, and Greg received that award this year. It was presented at the Annual Oregon Library Association Conference in Vancouver, Washington, last week. So, Greg, we just wanted to say thank you for all you do for libraries and for Clackamas County, and the many other things you do at Clackamas County as well. So, commissioners, if you want to say anything nice about Greg, he's sitting right here for you.
Well, yeah, I just want to say, I've had the opportunity to be in meetings and work and see Greg at work, the Eldac particularly, is when I really first got to really know Greg quite a bit. And later, in my comments, I'll speak a little bit about public involvement, because I think that's a, a couple of examples can be taken from that, that can be leveraged. But I just want to say he's been, worked very, very well with the people around the table in very difficult situations, as late as even Monday evening. So, it does, our, our engagement and the hard work that we do is always behind us and in front of us and present, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas. Appreciate it.
I won't belabor the issue or repeat what Commissioner Savas said, but I will say is that I use the library, and the RFID system works, and it works well. So, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I just got to say, back in the day, yeah, I've been here a long time, guys. It was in the early 80s when I, that's how I first got involved, is you all know, you know the library story, you know? But I remember we didn't have a system of that kind. It was just beginning to emerge, and if you thought, if you think the conversations now got thorny and difficult, wow, trying to get that system, we had libraries that wanted to go off and do their own little computer system, and that was the day when it was totally rudimentary, which would have been a huge mistake. And then we had the libraries that said, "Well, maybe we'll do it together." But finally, we got everybody at the same table, and I remember Beth Saul was a librarian at Canby. She was actually fomenting the rebellion and had me run one of the fomented rebellion meetings, I remember. But in the end, we, we did all come together as a library system, and the result was, you know, the professionalization of our services and the need, you know, to move not only into the 20th century, but the 21st century in improving access through the technology that we have. So, what you do is critically important, because as I've said many times, libraries are the bedrock of democracy, because it's equal access for information to all. And if I was to pick the two things we do best in this county and in this nation, it's libraries and parks. So, I think we ought to give you a big hand for your work that you did. Hey, and let me know where the next OLA meeting is. I'll try, if it's on a weekend, okay? If it's on a weekend.
They usually go for a few days, so we'll get, we'll get you in the next one.
It was over a few days, but I was a school librarian. I miss it. Still, still look up getting maybe my MLS online, but I don't know, I'm getting too old to go to school, so, there you go.
You're never too old to go to school.
Let the youngins do it from here on out. But thank you, you've been a delight to work with all these years, and your, your service doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you Administrator Schmidt. If I may just make two comments. I, I was very honored to receive this recognition from the Oregon Library Association, but as with any, any award, it's not just me, and I would be remiss in not acknowledging the wonderful staff that we have in the Library Network Office, who are the ones who are working with our libraries, Clackamas County libraries, every single day to provide excellent service. I would be remiss in not acknowledging Laura Zentner and the Department of Business and Community Services for their amazing support and encouragement over the years to help us move forward with providing library service. I would like to thank all of our city library partners who have worked, as you've said, to come to the table and to create a really wonderful functioning cooperative for the benefit of all residents of Clackamas County. And I would very much like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your constant engagement and support of libraries, particularly Commissioner Savas for coming to our Eldac meetings and providing his input and helping everybody move forward. Having that level of support and leadership at the county level has been a wonderful thing, knowing that you support what we do in libraries and the services that we're bringing to our citizens throughout the county. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, too. We really appreciate, let's give you a hand. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Schmidt?
Oh, yes, so Greg, thank you very much. So, commissioners, that is just one example of the many, many, many outstanding staff we have here at Clackamas County. You may go, Greg. Thank you. Second, our Water Environment Services Department, Wes, recently launched a pilot program to test all electric environmentally friendly utility vehicles, or EUTVs, to transport staff and equipment around the two largest wastewater treatment facilities here in the county. The EUTV Pilot Program reflects Wes's commitment to sustainability by minimizing waste and conserving energy and water. The program also aligns with the county's action plan for a sustainable Clackamas County. That's innovative work and another example of the fantastic creativity our employees bring to their work here at the county. Finally, commissioners, as you know, this weekend will be unveiled a new county website, clackamas.us. The goal of this new site is to organize content around county services while improving content functionality and better communication. Some of the highlights of the new website include more accessibility with automatic translations into multiple languages. You just click the language you wish to see, and the website is automatically translated into that language that you choose. Compliance with Americans with Disability Act content, which means greater access to all of our public. Creating pages that simplify and explain how to get access to county services. Implementing a countywide events calendar. And improved search and navigation features with more uses of videos and the online calendar. This goes live, this new website, this Saturday, April 27th, so please check it out, staff, commissioners, members of the public. Let us know what you think by hitting the Contact Us button and share your opinion, both good or bad. This website is a product of a 14-month collaboration with Public and Government Affairs Staff and Technology Services Staff, and I really thank them for their innovation and creativity and collaboration to make this a reality for our public, which really is what the website is. It's another tool to communicate and engage our public. So, thank you to our team for doing that. That's my update, commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Humberson.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on one portion of your remarks, the multiple-language translation part of the app. Both Commissioner Schrader and I have found, as a result of going to China for business purposes for the county, that one of the things that was requested was the ability to be able to access information about Clackamas County from people in other countries that don't speak our language. And having that put in there is going to be helpful for our business community and foreign countries' business communities who want to do business here in Clackamas County. So, particularly appreciate their efforts in getting that in the website. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any comments? Any more comments? Nope. We have it, so, all right, now we are to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Humberson, you're up.
Okay, thank you. It's been a busy two weeks with a break for the, for the first time in a while. My wife and I celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary, so there was a few days where I wasn't here, and I must say I enjoyed that. But other than that, I had the opportunity to tour one of our timber sales up in the Brightwood area, see on the ground how our timber team harvests wood on our, our lands. I'm particularly interested in that because with the Cross Laminate Timber Industry Initiative that we're working on, it's going to be important that the environmental community understands we do this in an environmentally sustainable manner, meeting or exceeding state and federal standards. I was able to see it on the ground myself that we do that, and that makes it easier for me in having those communications with the environmental community to say, "I've seen it on the ground myself. I know what they're doing." And I appreciate staff's time taking me up there to take a look at that. Attended the Forest Advisory Board meeting, the North Clackamas Chamber breakfast today, as the rest of us did, with Congressman Schrader. Last week was the Fair Board meeting, where they're continuing to work on their master plan. Testified at the Capitol on the construction of our courthouse. So far, that seems to be moving in our direction, fingers crossed that it will continue to do so. Attended a Stafford-Hamlet Town Hall on the subject of farmland preservation. The Asian Cultural Organization Dinner in Vancouver, I was the privilege to be invited by Mayor Drinkwine from...
Estacada.
Thank you, Estacada.
That's okay.
Synapse laps there.
That's okay, it happens.
I appreciated his invitation. They're quite interested in, in sort of a cultural exchange between their organization and Clackamas County. Hopefully, we'll see something come from that. I know Estacada is very interested in hosting them at one of their festivals in Estacada this summer. Looking forward to seeing that. Attended the League of Women Voters meeting and presented on behalf of Clackamas County some of the initiatives that we are involved in and where, where we are headed on different issues. Also attended the Clackamas Women's Services Event, which was honoring the people who have given so much of their time and energy and effort to families that suffer the distress of child abuse and spousal abuse. It was good to see the people who've given, in some cases, 15 and 20 years of their lives in, in helping out in that area. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dog.
And, oh, the dog. Yes.
Ah.
Yep. Here we go. This is Nugget here. He is looking for a new place to call home. He's a smooth-coated Chihuahua. He's a happy fellow, but can be a little shy at first. Not to worry, as soon as he realizes you're a nice person, he will be ready to snuggle in your lap. Although he's a little guy, he's pretty active and will need a family who will enjoy taking him for nice walks and maybe occasional adventures. Any kids in the house should be 13 years of age or older. He will be waiting patiently to meet you and can't wait to be best friends with his new family. For more information about Nugget or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, well, I just want to just, first of all, Gary mentioned the website, and I will say, I think this is probably the third or fourth iteration of the website, so I'm looking forward to seeing it as it is unveiled this weekend. And I'm hoping that, and I'm sure it will be, that the access to meetings and recordings and board packets and so forth, so people can reference what we're doing, was still as easily navigated as it is today, or navigable as it is today. And on that point, I always actually used the website just a couple of days ago, because, you know, when you're up here for eight years doing this job, and you, you know, you get the sense of what's, you know, what's a little bit different when you hear, start hearing things. And so, I've never, it was probably the first time ever, I've had so many people reach out to me and say, "Commissioner, you need to watch the end of that, that business meeting that you, that you had to leave early." And so, it was the April 11th business meeting. You need to watch the end. You need to watch the end. So, I've never had so many, so I actually accessed the website, and I watched the end of the meeting, and now I get it. I kind of get that. And I, I think that, you know, when I made my comments, I separated that, that I wasn't going to talk about transportation due to lack of time. I had an appointment at noon, so I had to leave early, and I just focused on the public involvement piece. Nothing else, just really about public involvement. And I, in some ways, I want this really to be a challenge to the new administrator, perhaps, or a new way of actually approaching this. And my point was, and I want to clarify my point, because apparently it wasn't, it was misunderstood by some, and that is that, you know, the previous commissions, commissions, plural, really, and, and I don't, not to build on what Les's comment was today as far as night meetings, it's, it's bigger than night meetings. It's really about our, about meetings and how we conduct ourselves and how we give people the opportunity to make sure that they are actually heard. What I love at the end of a meeting and Monday night, our Eldac group, there's no one in that room who walked away and say, "I was not heard." They were heard, and we've done a great job in that setting. But that meeting that we, I referenced on April 11th about a previous meeting in the McGlaughlin area, there were a number of people who came up to me and said, "I didn't get even a chance to say what I wanted to say, and they weren't heard." But I didn't hear that at the Canby meeting, when we talked about the ferry, the Canby Ferry. We, everyone had a chance to be heard at every one of those meetings. So, I, I think that really, when we do public involvement, that we ought to ask people at the end or a questionnaire, "Do you feel you were heard? Do you feel you had every opportunity to communicate?" And, and I think that might really bring to light, the, my point is that we need to raise the bar. I was pleased that the first county commission in its first composition when I first got here, and there forward, did a great job of keeping the bar high. And, you know, of course, that included night meetings, included a lot of those things. But it seems to me that there has been, whether it's been a need for more public involvement, but I think that needs to be spread across all kinds of meetings, and, you know, in this case, I think we need to be consistent. I mentioned consistency earlier, earlier today. I think there's an expectation. I mentioned this on April 11th. I think we're known for our public involvement in a positive way, that we have a history of doing things a certain way, and that we really, truly engage people, and people need to be heard. And I just want to, when I see us do a substandard job, when we have the bar up high, I'm, I'm going to speak to it. And I, and again, especially when people reach out to me at the end of the meeting and say, "I didn't even get a chance to say or speak or have a question," or so, so forth. So, these are, these are real. We don't fabricate these things, and I don't know, I just want to make sure that the, that they're following up and listening to the end of that meeting. It was not about transportation, and I think that the whole thing got misinterpreted as it was about transportation. It's about our, our public bar and how we conduct ourselves, how we make ourselves available in a consistent way everywhere we go, and even, even if we're not there, it's not just us, it's also our staff, that we're engaging the public. And I want to cite, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the Eldac is a great example, the Canby Ferry are two great examples in which no one walks away with the feeling that they were not heard. So, I'm going to shift and say, next week, I'll, I, just for those of you who don't know, I, I've been, well, you probably, some of you may know that I've had to travel quite a bit this year, and I don't necessarily like to be gone that often, and especially to the same place. So, I'm going to take my third trip to Washington, D.C. on Thursday, and I tried to coerce Sheriff Bernard to actually take that trip instead of me, because, you know, it seems to me that, you know, we ought to be spreading that, and it's tiring. I get, as anyone knows, when you leave and you're, you're working and you leave for a week or two or a few days, you get farther behind, and I am, I am quite far behind on a number of things I want to do. So, I'm, while I'm looking forward to the trip, I'm also not looking forward to be gone. So, I won't be here next Thursday. I'll be in Washington, D.C. with a number of transportation regional leaders, trying to convey to our federal delegation the importance of some transportation priorities of the region. So, I'll be doing my job, and I'll be, you know, be back, you know, late in the week. So, I wanted to, just, just to mention that. And lastly, the word of the day, Martha handed this to me, the word of the day is prodigy. And as a noun, it's something that is wonderful or marvelous, basically a wonder. So, an example of that, did you know, a prodigy is a person, especially a young one, endowed with an exceptional qualities or abilities. We are sure that all children, all of our children will be a prodigy in one thing or another, because they are our future. And I want to give an example, just to touch basically on my public comment piece, because we've done a great job in the past. And I don't want to embarrass the person, but in a positive way, but we, we have come across some exceptional young people in our public meetings, where they had an opportunity to participate in the meeting, speak, be part of it, be a member of the committee, and so forth. And we have seen some prodigies in Clackamas County come from our public involvement. So, I am proud in so many ways of what we have done, and this goes back even prior to when I was even on the commission, because I believe it was Commissioner Kenimer, and around that time, when complete communities were part of really that buildup of public involvement. I was proud as a citizen of Clackamas County... I was proud as a citizen of Clackamas County for what we've done, and I don't want to lower the bar. But speaking to the children, that's obviously a great way to get kids involved, children involved in our future, because they are our future, and I will end with that note.
Okay. You want me to do arts and culture in the county?
Oh, I did see that lower part. Arts and culture activities in the county. Mary, if you could bring that up on the screen. Singing in the Rain, presented by Lakewood Theater Company, opening this weekend on Friday, April 26, 7:30 PM. Saturday, April 27, at 7:30, and Sunday, April 28, at 2:00 PM. The Lakewood Center for Arts, Lake Oswego, entry fee, there's basically a hilarious situation, snappy dialogue, and a downpour of unforgettable songs. Number, one of them, Afternoon of Poetry at the Estacada Public Library, presented by the Estacada Poetry Project and the Estacada Public Library. And that is Sunday, April 28, 2:30 to 5:00 PM, in the Floral Room of the Estacada Public Library, which is free. Also, the First Matter Press Poets, Lauren Parides, KM Lighthouse, Andrew Chevaneur.
Yeah.
And Ash Good will read from their recently published books, followed by a Q and A session.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I have to say, just a quick, about the Estacada Library is a really beautiful library, that community came together, and a big way to build that, that structure or so. One of the jewels in our library system, among, among many in our crown. So let me just end with saying a few things. I do want to thank our staff for all the hard work that they do with, with public outreach. I want to thank Commissioner Savas and the rest of our Commissioners, because it's our job to make clear what our expectations are. But it isn't, it isn't a criticism at all, I just want to make that clear. It's really working together with really good professional people, Commissioner, you know that, that work really hard and, and that really do want to do a good job to get the input from people. So if we give a direction that we want questions asked, that will, that will happen. And, and I'm sorry, evidently, it didn't happen perhaps at one instance, but I think by and large, with our input, I think that we can, we can support our staff in the good job that they do, and that we as Commissioners also have to be held accountable for allowing people to talk to us and to ask questions and to put us on the spot, because we're always, remember, it's our job, what I always say, it's our job to take the tomatoes, it's not staff's job to take the tomatoes. They work for, they work for the community, they work for the public good, and we're elected, so we have to expect to, you know, we're the ones where we're going to get the, get it, and I'm okay with that, because I think part of our job is insulating good people, allowing them, not insulating them, but allowing them to do the good work, and that our job to help them is to, you know, anything that they think might go awry or they may have an issue with, that we're the ones that have to, we, we get elected to take the flak, bottom line. And I'm glad we do, and I think all of our Commissioners are aware of that and that we're very open to hearing from our citizens. So thank you for that. I know our expectations are going to be more than met with Mr. Schmidt in the end, and I want to thank all the staff for the hard work they do. The one big thing I wanted to point out for me this week, I have gone to multiple things, and the first one I wanted to mention was the opening of Wichita Park, which was fantastic, with a ribbon cutting. Paul and I and Commissioner Fisher were there. I know Commissioner Ken, you're on your 50th wedding anniversary, so we missed you, but we know that you had a good reason to be there, and I know that...
They're our priorities.
Yeah, our priorities, and that should be one of them. And Commissioner Bernard was also out of town, but I want to thank NCPRD, because when I went to their table, as many people know, I started out as a pollination ecologist/entomologist, which is a fancy way of saying I studied blueberry pollinators when I was a young, young'un, back, again, back in the day, in the late seventies and early eighties, and you had like packets, NCPRD had packets of pollination flowers for native pollinators that they were handing out at this event. And I was just so thrilled, because I want to do this big pollination thing throughout the county. It's not that hard. You can get the seeds, you can talk to our extension office, our master gardeners offer classes on gardening and how to attract pollinators, and I was really pleased to see our Parks District being part of that whole conversation with those seeds and also the gardening gloves that were there. So thank you for that. I think that was really appropriate. It's a, it's a gorgeous park and an area the community that really needed, needed it and needed the play structure and needed everything that they basically have to recreate. So it was, that was really kind of a fun thing. The only other thing I want to mention is I did have a chance to go to the Oregon City Business Alliance, and the Clackamas County, North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce held together with our Clackamas Workforce Partnership, we had a workforce day where we talked about what it was going to take, fits in with the theme today of young people, what it takes to get a trained workforce. And guess what, folks? It starts from K, you know, K six, it moves on to middle school, and it moves on to high school. So we had a number of panelists, including Larry Didway, Peter Lund, we had, we had a man, I'm sorry, I don't have the list of names in front of me, a contractor, everybody talking about as a panel, what, what do we need to have as a trained workforce? And so we are, we're working on it. But Peter Lund, I really need to watch, I'm going to encourage everybody to watch the tape of that meeting. He made a statement that had everybody up standing up and clapping, because he basically said, what we have to do in the end is bring back honor to the work that we do, the work with our hands, the work with our minds. We, we really need to, again, I wish I could watch the tape. He just said, it's, it's good to work with our hands, it's good to work with our minds. We can face these challenges. And it was one of the most inspiring comments I heard about what workforce really is. So I'm going to encourage everybody, if you can get a hold of that tape, Gary, I don't know if we can even include it on our county website, but we are all ready to stand up and cheer with that, because it is all about educating our young people for the future, educating them for workforce, educating them to have full and prosperous lives. And we have a good team here in Clackamas County that has, has our goal, and we're going to continue to work towards that goal. So with that, I have more I could say, but that's okay. Now that I'm the chair, I know I have to shut up, so. Just chair for the day, by the way, just chair for the day, and move us on, and thank you, colleagues. It was fun. It was fun to be back. I've been chair before, but, so it's kind of a little deja vu, but I'm going to be glad to hand the gavel back, and with that, we are adjourned.